And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, who deliver peace and justice for all.
We'll start roll call to my far right.
My Ham here.
Commissioner Mader here.
Commissioner Bowden here. Ford here. Okay, we have a quorum of four. Next item is the consent agenda. All matters listed on the consent agenda have been distributed to each member of the planning commission for study. These items are considered to be routine and will be enacted upon by one motion with no separate discussion. If the separate discussion is desired on an item from either the planning commission or the floor, that item may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda. We have one item on the consent agenda. It's the standing approval of the minutes as written for the meeting on January twenty-six, 2021. Would anyone like that item removed? Seeing that, I would accept a motion to approve the minutes as written for the meeting on January twenty-six, 2021.
So moved.
I have a motion by Commissioner Ford. Do you have a second?
Second.
I have a second by Commissioner Mader to accept the minutes from January twenty-six, 2021. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes four to zero. Alright, regular agenda item number one, Freddie's SP dash two zero dash zero nine.
Good evening. The first item up on the agenda is for Freddie's Restaurants, the site plan. Subject property is a, from a two lot subdivision, the Blue Valley subdivision, includes approximately 1.8 acres of land that is located at the northeast intersection of East Main Street and Cedar Street. The property is zone C two, commercial, and Freddie's Restaurant will be located on Lot One. The site is within the recently adopted Garter-Maid Street corridor plan, as revised in 2018, which proposes, proposed uses limited those to that meet the needs of residents such as civic, grocery, retail, restaurants, hotel, entertainment, venues, etc. The site plan provides for ample access to the site from Cedar and Shawnee Streets and across access easement to the quick trip to the east. The facility is adequately accommodated on this site and benefits the function and design of adjacent property by providing for continuation of the shared access drive between the internal lots, along with the commercial activities to the north and east. Site circulation is adequately accommodated based on the truck turning template that was provided in your packet as well. Freddie's, as you can see from the elevations, this is an attractive building that meets design standards with a variety of complimentary materials, awnings, and parapet heights to add interest. The plan shows the required number of trees and shrubs with thirty-two ornamental trees, eight evergreens, seventy-seven ornamental shrubs, eighty-one evergreen shrubs. Sidewalks shall be installed along all street fronts, with sidewalks along Main Street to be moved further away from the curb, and this is one of the conditions of approval. Staff finds the site is capable of accommodating the building uses and other site design elements. The design and arrangement of buildings in open space is consistent with good planning and landscaping design. The architecture and building design uses quality materials and the style is appropriate for the context. The plan is in substantial compliance with the code. The staff recommendations, staff recommends approval of file development plan with the conditions outlined in the recommended motion section.
Yep, thank you Bob. At this time, does Velford like to speak, or anyone on the team? State your name and address. No, I think they're trying to unmute this hill. If you got him for speed. Dan, are you trying to talk? There you go.
Well, I wasn't going to, but I sure, I can. No, on behalf of Freddie's, I just, just say thank you for the opportunity to be here to present to you and, and looking forward to a good future relationship with the City of Gardner.
Thank you, Dan. Can I get your address, please?
Email address?
No, that, your address, name and address, that you're supposed to state before you speak.
Oh, I'm sorry, Dan Willams. I'm the Director of Corporate Construction with Freddie's USA.
Okay. Is there an address to that?
Two sixty North Rock Road, Wichita, Kansas.
Okay, thank you. Alright, would anyone else like to speak for Velford? Okay. With nothing further, we'll go to discussion by the Commissioners, starting from far right.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Mader?
Um, just, just a, a quick comment. I think this is a really good plan. I know folks are gonna be excited to have Freddie's in town, so, great. I also like the recommendation having the sidewalk pushed far enough back from Main Street. Well, now that's a very crazy busy road, so I think that, that was a good foresight thinking, and I'm also happy to see there's no entrances on Main Street, because that's very, very claustrophobic-ish. So, um, yeah, no, no other, no questions, no concerns, just, um, this was a, a good, a good plan. Thank you, staff, for the reporting. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Ford?
I have nothing to add.
And I have nothing. So, with no further comments, I'd accept a motion on this item.
After review of application, SP dash two zero dash zero nine, a site plan for Freddie's located at the northeast corner of Main and Cedar Streets, and site plan dated January twenty-second, 2021, and staff report dated February twenty-second, 2021, the planning commission approves the application, but following conditions are met. One, moving the sidewalk along Main Street to at least six feet back from the curb to coordinate construction of the sidewalk with the city engineer. Two, approval of the traffic impact study and stormwater management plan by the City of Gardner Public Works Department prior to the issuance of a building permit and three, before any development can occur on Lot Two, a site plan application will need to be submitted and approved.
Have a second?
Second.
Alright, we'll give that second to Commissioner Ham. So, first by Commissioner Ford, a second by Commissioner Ham. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any, anyone against? Any abstentions? Motion passes four to zero. Thank you. Alright, number two on the regular agenda, consideration of proposed Title XVII Land Development Code amendments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Dave Knopchek, Community Development Director. I'm gonna give you a brief overview presentation. This is a public hearing item, which was published in the newspaper, or in the published record, if you will, that we utilize for the newspaper. It was published actually twice in advance of this meeting so that we'd have adequate publication. We are proposing a number of amendments tonight. Most of these are administrative amendments, but I wanted to give you an overview of the process as well. Just so that you know, amendments can be initiated by the governing body, the planning commission, or by staff. That process is prescribed to us in Section seventeen oh three, one one zero of the Land Development Code, and it requires a public hearing by the planning commission, at which time then the planning commission takes it under advisement and discussion, and can make a recommendation to the governing body. The governing body consideration then is also for consideration of adoption by ordinance of those amendments. These sets of amendments before you were initiated by staff. We provided a draft to you at your last planning commission meeting in January. The city attorney has reviewed these since that time. There were some minor changes or revisions that were incorporated into the draft as a result of that legal review, primarily with the annexation portion, and I'll talk to that when we get to that section here. The chapters that are impacted I have listed here, what I'm gonna try to do is move through these chapter by chapter. I'm not gonna read word for word everything that's in there, but certainly I want to give you a broad overview of what's going on with those things. The issues that we're trying to address through these amendments, you can see them listed here, have to do with the zoning and non-conformances that may be created through annexation. We wanted to clarify a few definitions that are already in the, the LDC, but also add a few definitions for clarification as well. You may recall in September of last year, we had a case involving Conestoga, and it was noted with the special use permit, some items having to do with the permit expiration date and extension date, as well as if conditional use should be required for mobile homes in a zoning district that is specifically set up for mobile home parks. So, this is gonna adjust those, as well as looking at the administrative adjustment process for clarification in the allowances, and you can see what we've done here with the manufactured mobile home park that I've talked to you about. And one item that came up recently had to do with the placement of temporary offices at construction and development sites. That was an item that came to staff by developers who are thinking about putting construction trailers out primarily at residential sites, and so we'll talk about that for a minute. I'm not gonna go through every one of these points, but I will say for Chapter seventeen point oh one, as we talked about, that's the general provisions section. We are impacting the area having to do with annexation. The way the code is currently written, it's in conflict with state court rulings and findings, so we had to clean that up. Essentially, what our code said was that the zoning would convert upon annexation from the previous jurisdiction zoning to an equivalent zoning in the city. So, it was an automatic process. That's how it's worded currently. State court has found and has ruled that what you have to do is still go through a rezoning process. So, what we've done with the amendments in this section is to outline that process, where the city would initiate that by petition, so that people could move forward in that rezoning process and get the equivalent zoning. If they desire to develop, they would then rezone to whatever level is required for that redevelopment or development scenario. In regard to non-conformances, I'll just briefly point out that when we do this kind of annexation, if a petition comes in, or we do the petition to a city district, it is likely, if it already has a house or some type of development on there, that there will be some non-conformances that will exist because of what's already on the property. So, that section has been added to address those non-conformances, and if expansion of those are requested in the future, how that would be dealt with. Chapter seventeen point oh two, having to do with the definitions. You can see here, really, these are kind of assisting us with the administrative interpretation of regulations. In fact, a couple of these are items that previous staff had indicated, and had listed as things that they saw as needing to be changed, so this is not just new to me or, or to the staff that's here before you tonight, but these are a number of items that they felt were necessary as they've been talking with developers or going through the development review process. It would be good either to define some of these terms, which are the new ones, or to clarify some of the terms that already existed, so that, essentially that way we don't have interpretations out there, or multiple interpretations that we're applying. Chapter seventeen oh three has to do with the applications and procedures section. This is the element that is addressing the conditional use permit, primarily having to do with the issue raised during our discussion in September with the Conestoga piece, and I'm just gonna cite, the wording clarification that's most important here was in subsection C, where it was kinda confusing. Could we only issue a conditional use permit for two years, and if so, could it only be extended once for one year? So, there was some confusion about who had what authority and what that really meant. What we've essentially done is cleaned that up to understand that you can approve a conditional use permit for whatever time you feel is appropriate for that application. So, what we will ask applicants to do is bring in their application with a request for how long they believe they would like that to last, and then through our evaluation process, we'll bring a recommendation forward to you. You certainly will have the ability to look at that recommendation, talk with the applicant. If you feel that needs to be adjusted, you can do that through your process of recommendation to the city council for the conditional use permit. So, this helps clarify that. Most importantly, I think, it has to do with, there's a number of conditional uses, and the reason we brought this up, there were a number of conditional uses that quite frankly will involve investment to help happen. So, for instance, I'll just use one. Grocery stores in the ten thousand to forty-five thousand K range, thousand feet range in a C one or COA district would require a conditional use permit. But if we limit that to two years, you're not gonna see a lot of people willing to invest money to build that building in the event that it may expire in two years as far as an allowed use or a conditional use. So, that's what we wanted to clean up there. In regard to administrative adjustments on this, there's a little bit of confusion there, and quite frankly, it's more on my part. I wanted to make sure we clarified when the director has administrative discretion and when the planning commission has administrative discretion. You know from our processes that administrative site planning is where the staff has that discretion. Site plans, just like you had in front of you for Freddie's, you have discretion on that. We can make a recommendation to you, staff, but you have that ability to have that enhanced discretion for allowances. So, we clarified that through the language, and then we outlined in those cases what level or what degree, if you will, we would allow that adjustment to occur. So, we boosted that number in the current, in the current LDC, for staff under administrative plans, it would be by less than five percent, okay? And for the planning commission, under site plans, it would be less than ten percent. What we're recommending through our language is that we adjust that upward, so that staff has ten percent discretion, and you would have twenty percent discretion. Okay, so we're boosting that up. How does this come into play? If a developer comes into us with a site and brings something forward, and they're looking through the administrative site plan process, okay, at staff level, we would have that discretion for allowances up to ten percent of a numeric value, okay, or ten percent of the percentage value. What wasn't clear before was, is it ten percent of thirty percent, which is point three, or is it three percentage points? And so, we're sitting there playing with that. So, we cleaned that up to just say, it's three percentage points in the case of percentages, it's three numeric points in the case of the numeric side of things, not a percentage. They still would have to meet that equal or better standard as well. So, it's not just a matter of you come in and you ask for it, and we grant you ten percent off, okay? What we do is we evaluate that to see if the overall design and the discretion of that allowance would give us the flexibility that we are getting an equal to or better product, okay, at the end of the day. So, you have the same ability for the planning commission to consider this, except it would be that twenty percent allowance. In these cases, it's interesting that somebody may enter the process and come to us with an administrative adjustment, and they would like a thirty percent adjustment. Staff can no longer do the administrative site plan. Planning commission would no longer do the site plan and design review that you normally do. They would have to go to a planned development, okay, which would initiate a preliminary and final plan to show anything greater than that twenty percent. So, if you think about it as a three, three-layer cake, if you will. First layer, staff. We have a certain amount of discretion if they're asking for more. It comes to you through the second process. Third process, it comes to you and the city council for approval, because they're asking for more than either of us have as far as administrative discretion. So, hopefully that helps explain that part. Chapter seventeen point oh five, with the zoning districts and use standards. Again, this is intended to address the manufactured mobile and microhome community in the M, oh, sorry, in the RM dash P district. This affects the use table, so what we've done is we've changed that designation from a conditional use to a permitted use. Being a planned district, there's a whole series of standards that they still have to meet from a design standpoint, and they're still gonna come before you with preliminary plans and final plans for that development. This just simply makes it a permitted use at that point in time. Then the second item on here has to do with temporary uses, and you'll note that what we've added are temporary offices at residential construction and development sites are now, if this is approved, would be considered a temporary use, okay? So, these are not permanent uses. We do require with temporary uses, a temporary use permit. So, in addition to a building permit, if somebody wanted to put that construction trailer up at a residential development or on a construction site, they would still get a building permit because they're likely gonna have to attach to utilities. So, that electrical, plumbing, whatever else they need to add to that is what triggers the building permit side of this. But we would still also require the temporary use, which means we would see a site plan making sure that they're meeting setback standards and things like that, and that the overall development that's being utilized around that construction office, if you will, meets our standards. And so, that's what they'd be looking at there. And number eight, what we did with the temporary offices on the construction development sites is we tried to differentiate the difference between something like this in a commercial construction zone versus a residential zone. We're gonna be much more sensitive about a temporary trailer in a residential development. So, the idea is that that temporary trailer being used for construction office purposes would be allowed after the issuance of a permit for a model home that would then transfer the office from that trailer to that model home. Okay, so the trailer would be allowed to be there until the model home is built. The time the model home is built, and it's got an occupancy certificate, the trailer has to be taken offline. Now, that office, that model home, becomes the office for sales as well as construction use. A lot of times contractors or the developer might use the garage to store materials when they receive them. So, that is to allow that to happen. I think with that, I'm gonna stop. As far as the staff recommendation, you need to conduct the public hearing, obviously, that's been advertised. Upon closure of the public hearing, you'll wanna discuss the proposed amendments. Staff will be glad to answer questions that you may have, and then you would make a recommendation to the governing body regarding the proposed amendments. There's three motion options that have been provided here to you, and we can discuss those after the public hearing, so.
Alright, thank you. Alright, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. If anyone from the public would like to speak at this time, you can approach the podium, state your name and address. Seeing no one approached the podium, I'll accept a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
I have a motion to close the public hearing for Commissioner Ford. Do you have a second? A second by Commissioner Ham. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against? Any abstentions? Motion passes, public hearing's closed. Alright, Commissioner, discussion. Commissioner Ham?
Um, I thought it was really well done. I sat down and read it after the last meeting. Everything made sense. I had sat down and read everything side by side, and I paying attention to the things that were in red and looking at the, at the changes, and I saw the rationale behind the changes that took place. So, I'm glad that the administration, the administrative side saw these things and made the necessary adjustments to, to make it happen. So, well done. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Mader?
Yeah, just, just a couple of questions, clarifications. So, I agree, I'm, I'm with Commissioner Ham. This is, this is good. It was needed. I, I understood after seeing the material why you guys are doing what you're doing. So, my first question is on Chapter seventeen dot zero two definitions. Under area L, maybe it's just because I don't know, when, in the red writing, it says for the purposes of the Land Development Code, exer-scaping features?
Exer-scaping?
What is that?
Exer-scaping is a type of landscaping that is a low water use landscaping. It can involve rocks and, and things like that, as well as low water use plants.
Okay.
So, what comes into play is the idea of that hard surface kind of element. Is that really considered part of the landscaping area or not? So, this is actually something that came from a previous staff, that in their discussions with people, they felt was something that could be changed. I would agree, the, the only difference between exer-scaping and what we consider a, a regular landscaping bed, if you will, is the fact that it's low water usage plants, and then the, the material that's used around those, those plants is usually not an organic material. Well, I take that back. It can be an organic material, but it may involve rocking the area and other things, and so, there was clarification for that one.
Okay.
And then the pedestrian walks, obviously, that was a paved surface, and so, for clarification, they have been allowing, when people were doing those direct walks from the public sidewalk to the entry door, not from the driveway, but from the, from the sidewalk to the door, that would be considered landscape area for figuring the percentages.
Okay, okay. It was, I, I didn't have my Google box handy, so I wasn't for sure what that was, and I-
Yep.
Okay, thank you. It's a new one for me. Um, and then just, just curiosity question. Making the adjustments for the percentages between administrative and planning commission review, was it you were finding there were a lot of administrative adjustments that could be, could be made easier, or more effectively perhaps, is the better way to state it? More effectively by allowing for the ten percent for the administrative and then the increase for-
That one's, that one's a little more difficult. It was not driven by anything we're seeing necessarily as far as applications and things. What I have encountered in other places and what we've talked about was more of, what does five percent really do for you? And if we were dealing with a setback area, five percent of a seven-foot setback is point three five feet, and it's not really that much, you know? And a lot of times, you know, you're sitting there and you're going, okay, I can give you some discretion here, but it's still not really worth much. The reason I stopped at ten percent, and if you all feel that there's a, a different number there, I think the idea of boosting it up to just see what we get out of this is gonna be really important. It, we may find it still an ineffective number in some cases, but our fear is, is that that ten percent can also mean something differently. So, if I have a parking lot requirement for a hundred parking spaces, that's up to ten parking spaces that could be removed from that scenario. That might be a little more discretion than we really wanna have at the staff level. So, because these are trying to cover such broad ranges of items, I felt comfortable saying, okay, let's get from five percent, but ten percent was kinda my logical stopping point to see what this does.
Okay.
If we find it still not helpful, if we find that it's not something that is of value, just like your twenty percent, we can certainly go ahead and come back at a later date and say, well, let's boost this up. What we're finding is, we're falling short on seventy percent of the requests we've had, and here's what they're oriented towards, and we might be able to then also get more specific language in here. So, for instance, if you, if you look at that real close, it has A, B, and C. You have three items there.
Right.
One has to do with building standards, one has to do with site standards, and then of course, there's that equal or better, right?
Right.
So, the, the problem there is, is site standards are a lot of different things. Building standards are a lot of different things. What we may find is there are certain, let's say it is setbacks, or let's say it's heights. It may be a height thing, so what we could do is pull the height out, say specifically for heights under these conditions, we might wanna have a thirty percent discretion versus a ten percent. But until we start getting those requests a little bit more and have an understanding of that, it's difficult for me to basically set a number and say, oh, this'll take care of everything.
Right, right.
These are numbers where staff felt comfortable at ten and twenty percent level without taking too much administrative discretion.
Sure, sure.
And also hopefully addressing some minor elements that may be out there, and we just felt, instead of five percent, ten was something that we could at least try to start with.
Cool. Yeah, I, I just didn't know if, if it was a trend you were seeing, or if it was, hey, let's start with this, and we think this is going to be an effective number.
Yeah, I think it's, it's more of, let's start with this.
Yeah.
Let's see if it's more effective. What I really like, though, in this system, in our, in our system, is what I explained before. If somebody comes to me and they're asking for more than what I have, I have a way to put them in the system or in a process that's the next step.
Right.
So, if it's more than ten percent, say fifteen, seventeen percent, that falls into your realm, and I can tell them, I do not have that discretion, but the planning commission can consider this. Now, whether you want to grant it or not, obviously, we'll do a review. We'll give you our recommendation on that, but in that discretion realm, you will have the ability to grant that. And then what I also like is somebody comes back above that twenty percent, it's gonna come through a planned process.
Absolutely.
And then you're gonna have that full plan review-
Right.
-that takes the city council. So, I like the way this is layered in your system already. So, I don't think there's a need for me to grab too much administrative discretion-
Sure.
...because there's an out, there's a way for them to go to that next-
Right.
...level when I can't do it, so.
Yeah, that's, yeah, thank you so much, Dave. That really, that, that helps explain. I, like I said, I just was curious- I, like I said, just was curious. Um, this is, this is great. And, um, that was all I had for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ford.
Um, after I had a chance to review and read through things and so forth, um, e- everything made sense to me. The presentation was well done and really hit home on why the changes are being made and what changes were actually happening, not just, here's a bunch of red text. But no, I, I completely agree with, with all these. I'm in favor of it.
Well, I, uh, I've ran into a lot of these, and I was very happy to see some of these changes, uh, non-conformance we ran into with Darker Lake, so it's very happy to see uh, that addressed a little bit better. Uh, you've already mentioned some conditional use permit things that we ran into and possibly could run into, and administrative adjustments. I'm very happy with that change. Example of that was bicycle parking at Price Topper, uh, where I wish at that point the administrative adjustments would have been higher. So, um, it doesn't happen very often. You don't go to administrative adjustments very often, but I've already had one example where that would have been nice to have, so. Uh, I am in complete support of all these changes. So, sounds like everybody is in support, so I'll take a, a motion to approve the proposed amendments as presented.
I'll make that motion, that the Planning Commission, after review of the, uh, proposed amendments, that the Planning Commission recommends approval of the proposed amendments and forwards such recommendation to the governing body.
Second? Okay, I have a motion by Commissioner Mater and a second by Commissioner Ham. Any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any against, any abstentions? Motion passes four to zero.
Uh, we have no further discussion items, so I take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion to adjourn by Commissioner Ford and a second by Commissioner Mater. All those in favor state aye.
Aye.
Any against? We are adjourned.
Just as a quick reminder, we will have an agenda for March, so there is a March meeting.